He owns property in Augusta Avenue and he has some drainage issues. And he was here several, about a year ago, about the same issue. And we want to recognize you, Mr. Williams. Go ahead and proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. More or less piggybacking on what Ms. Bright presented. No one is against affordable housing for anyone. But in our neighborhood, we are inundated with houses for rent. We don't need any more. But the basic thing that I have risen to consult you with is drainage. When the initial thing were done, you said drainage would be taken care of. It hasn't been. I'm a product of that. We're building River Bend Four. And we are concerned with drainage. Nothing has been done. Mrs. Bright did a wonderful job in outlining what the street's gonna be like if floods come back. Without a long overdue of anything, before anything is done, drainage need to be addressed. If it isn't addressed, it's a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Larry Traul, please. I'm gonna give you a minute and I'm gonna talk to the council. We're gonna decide how we're gonna handle this particular issue. Thank you, Mr. Traul. Please proceed.
I am Larry Traul, Director of Woodside, Samtown. And we are against these apartments because, number one, with all the apartments that's being built, down Lower Third, Samtown and Woodside, between Hudson and Tulane, I guarantee you there's over fifty or sixty apartments being built down there. And with all of these apartments, if they don't get rid, all of this gonna be returned into Section Eight houses. And if they go to Section Eight houses, we bringing back the drugs and everything else that wanna come out there, just because of the rent has gone down. The other thing is drainage. When Mr. Smith was Councilman, we were talking about a forty-five acre detention pond. It never did get built. And because this water won't have anywhere to go. We collect the water from MacArthur Drive and all across LA. And it comes through Samtown, Woodside. When that canal is full, there's nowhere for that water to go. River Bend and everybody else, even what Ms. Bright was talking about, all is gonna be full of water because there's nowhere for it to go. When them canals are full, there's nowhere to go. You can't pump it off nowhere. But when Mr. Smith was talking about the forty-five acre detention pond, nobody listened. But somebody needs to take heed to it and listen to it because this water have to have somewhere to go. We get a ten or fifteen inch rain, everything is flooded. On the Samtown, Lower Third, Woodside, all that's gonna be flooded because the water's coming to us, to the south side of town. And we need somebody to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Jules Green for a quick minute because we're about to wrap it up. After Mr. Jules will speak, I'm also allow Mr. Goins because this is his district. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Jules Green. I actually live in District Four, Mr. Silver's district. Capacity times velocity. Piggybacking on the presentation on the Versailles show, the area down Lower Third, you're going to build something and then come back and do the drainage. Versailles beautifully done, has sidewalks, has good draining already. So all these people who have the intention of doing businesses, apartments, move in, construction sites ready, they're able to move in with no problem. Once you build these apartments, you have to then go back and do the drainage. The people on Fifth Street's gonna catch you. I know Ms. LaCour, visit her house often. If it rains down there, you almost need a roadboat. So if you're gonna add this problem, it's sad, it's sad. Versailles Boulevard, treat these people down Lower Third the same. I don't live down there, but I know folks that do. Treat us all the same, saying us, meaning everyone in the city of Alexandria. I thank you for your time. Think about your vote that you're going to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jules Green. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Goins.
Thank you, Mr. Lavadain. And thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is what democracy is about. First, I just want to applaud Mr. David Strange and the money that you've already invested and that you've attempted to invest in our neighborhoods. We do appreciate you. I don't want you to misconstrue any sentiments on tonight that the community doesn't respect you for what you're doing. I want to thank Mr. Rod Knows for coming out. I want to thank Mr. Clifford Moeller for coming out. Mr. Joe Page, Pastor John Russell, and Ms. Mary Williams, thank you all for coming out. The support or the opposition for this project on tonight was overwhelmingly more than four. I represent the folks that approached their microphone and spoke out against this project. Reluctantly, members of the council, I have to voice my position to this project. I think we need economic development in the Lower Third community. But also, I have to remember first that it's not my decision, but I am the voice of the people that elected me into this office. So I recommend that we reject this ordinance.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Mr. Fowler.
One of the concerns was drainage. I happened to be able to review the drainage plan that was been drawn by, I believe it was Mr. Willis. And it's been bid and that project's gonna be awarded, I believe, tonight. It's up for award. It's not two weeks. It'll be up for... In two weeks. So to say that the drainage is not being addressed, drainage is being addressed, project's designed, bids are in, and award should happen in two weeks, so drainage is addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Any questions or comments from the council? Chair recognizes Ms. Gibson.
I have a few questions. Mr. Strange, will your apartment complex accept housing?
I'm sorry?
Will the new phase of the apartment complex that you are proposing, will it accept housing as payment? The Section Eight housing, I'm sorry. Thank you.
As a result of our funding source that are ostensibly federal funds, we can't discriminate against anyone based upon the fact that they have a housing voucher. I can tell you that in Phase One, we have fifty-six residential units. Four of those units, four residents that live there, receive a portion of a subsidy as it relates to the housing program. The other fifty-two pay one hundred percent of the rent, and those four pay the lion's share of it. So we can't discriminate against it. However, I would say that our rent structure is such that we're able to have a modicum credit score that we can utilize, that we have to apply across the board. So whether you would have a housing voucher or have a job and pay a hundred percent of your rent, you're gonna have to meet our minimum credit score, which, by and large, would preclude someone that was not otherwise working and therefore would not be entitled to a voucher.
Those that are on the waiting list, do you know how many of those are coming to you with housing vouchers?
I mean, I would expect that the numbers would be the same. I mean, across our several thousand units that we have in many states, across all of our developments, it is substantially less than ten percent of any of our residents in what we call workforce housing have any kind of assistance.
If you know this, and I'm throwing this out there to you or even the administration, do you not, are these new people moving into Alexandria, or is this just renters moving around?
No. Well, you know, it's some rental moving around, it's some people transitioning from housing that they own that they're no longer able to maintain. We've had a lot of people that were displaced as a result of the economic and mortgage crisis. I think it was unfortunate that we didn't have time today to hear from a lot of other people that were here with us to support our side of the ledger, that someone was gonna speak today that their utility bill was over a thousand dollars at a rental house they were paying six hundred dollars a month for, and where they live with us now, it's four hundred dollars a month with a rental bill of a hundred dollars. And that just changed their monthly disposable income to a thousand dollars, to the positive for one person. There are a lot of people like that. And I wanted to say one other thing, indulge me in this one thing, is that everyone that is a resident of our development is at work or was at work when this meeting started. We had many, many people that wanted the opportunity to come speak today, but they simply couldn't afford to take or weren't allowed to take the time off for work to come have their voice heard today. So on behalf of those people, I want to present their side of the story and say that everyone that lives there loves being there. And we are in, because of the waiting list, these developments, it's a wonderful program.
Did you complete your questioning?
I think so.
Okay. Mr. President, you want to say something real quick?
Thank you, Chairman Lavadain.
Okay, stand up and go to the microphone, sir. We can see you. And go ahead, while he's coming up.
While he's coming to the podium, I would just like to applaud Councilman Jonathan Goins for the decision he made today based on what he heard from the residents of District Three. And I can assure you that Councilman Goins, looking at the commercial side of this based on what was heard today, will continue to work toward that goal in looking toward what the residents would like to see in full commercial in that respective area. I feel like the individuals that's here today, like the Rod Knows and those respective people who have worked in our city in economic development, would truly be glad to also listen to those things and work with you as the district councilman and decided to work toward those things to see that those things are one day eventually met. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, your quick question, please.
My name is Benny Smith. I'm new to this area, and if you hadn't have said anything, I wouldn't have raised my hand. But I did move here just less than two years ago.
From where?
From California. And because I'm retired, I know that my income wouldn't allow me to stay in California very long. So by me being on a strict income, I knew it would be to my advantage to live somewhere where it would be affordable for me to live. And where I live at now, it makes it affordable for me to live.
So you are one of the current residents?
Not in the unit that most of the folks are talking about, but in, I'm in Stratford Manor. It's one of the other units that developed it.
All right. Thank you, sir, for those comments. Welcome to our city. We hope you can, we show you the hospitality that you deserve. Chair recognizes Mr. Silver then Mr. Goins.
Couple of things. First, I want to applaud the administration for the work they've done and also those people bringing this idea to your group. Secondly, I truthfully hate to see twenty million dollars go down the tube because it's very difficult to get people here, as evidenced by what we're trying to do with the hotel and other areas. However, Mr. Lavadain is the titular head of your district, and I have to be governed by his recommendations.
Mr. Goins.
Mr. Goins, I mean. And I thought, you know, we have about seventy-five people here. I don't know what happened if we had the entire group from down there, or maybe the entire group of a vote for District Three. But be that as it may, I, as a member of council, have to defer to the wishes of the person representing your district, and that's the reason. For the sake of concern, I guess we have to make some recommendation to the Councilman at large later on this evening. And I defer to the chairman to be governed by his wishes.
Real quick, Ms. Gibson.
Okay, yes. With this being public property, it's owned by the city, and I so wish the administration was here to answer this question, but has it been, has an RFP gone out for a mixed use now that seemingly we are considering a mixed use for the property?
I can answer that question.
Okay, yes, sir.
We've had these things out now for well over a year. This is the first concrete deal.
RFP for commercial. I'm asking, has an RFP gone out for the mixed use?
Just because we modified for the hotels, we did the same thing here to see if we'd get things off and running. We've tried several different things. So I mean, we've, this is not, we've got pages and pages of work done on it, and that's just, this came up with the best deal. That was from the study.
Okay.
In fact, you have something in your book today stating what's happening in these areas, calling, they're calling it urban living throughout the country, and I'm starting to come down here. This is for tomorrow, not today.
Is that a yes or a no? Has RFPs for mixed use on this property gone out, or is it just RFPs for commercial?
I couldn't, would you know, well, Mr. Silver speaks on behalf of the administration. Can you answer it? Mr. Goins?
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Gibson. But the reason why a mixed use RFP hasn't gone out is because the people only wanted commercials. And we only had one responded, and that was Mr. Strange, who came back with the mixed use proposal.
Thank you.
All right. Let's, thank you, Ms. Gibson. Let's wrap it up. What is the, we can have a motion, Economic Development Committee, or myself, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Silver, what is the committee's recommendation on this item? Mr. Goins has entertained that he is in opposition to this.
Only because of the citizens that showed up tonight.
Okay. Do I have a motion, or how you want to handle this?
Excuse me. Can I direct a question to him?
Yes, sir. Please do.
Question is this. What if more people came at a different time, would that change your opinion?
It's something to consider, you know, but based on what we had tonight at this meeting.
The reason I'm saying this, if it's definitive, then it's over. Is that, we have to pay the price.
Meeting was at three thirty. Citizens showed up. It was overwhelming opposition, and that's who I have to go with.
That's it. I make, as Chairman, go ahead.
Well, I'll just need to add this to, I understand where Mr. Silver is coming from, and pretty frankly, if there would have been a public meeting in that community, we may have a different result. As far as individuals' opinions, if we would have brought this to the public first, then there is a possibility.
Okay. Thank you. To wrap this up, as Chairman, I make a motion that we oppose this motion, this ordinance. All in favor? Any second?
I'll say that.
We oppose it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it, motion.
I'm opposed to it, but you still win. That's all right.
Point of order. Excuse me. Chairman, please. Can we just clarify this as it's gonna be recommended to the full council from this finance committee?
I think our position is what Mr. Goins sees an opposition of itself.
With caveat.
With a caveat.
That it was only because of the opposition that showed up tonight.
Okay.
I think it's a great project for the city and District Three.
Okay. Let's make a motion and...
Can I ask a direct question to the developer?
Real quick, Mr. Silver. Real quick.
To the developers, let me ask you this question. Presumably, this is gonna fail this evening. Here's a caveat stating that perhaps if we had a larger group, something else would happen. Number three, though, in view of that, either it may be dead by this tonight, or if it can be perpetuated, are you in a position to having some sort of an extension to see if that is workable? I hate to see twenty million dollars go down the drain.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's done.
Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you. Mr. President, on items two, three, and four, I would like to yield. We're gonna have to have those items next meeting because we have to go into the council meeting. Let me get your attention, please.
He got to, he had no choice.
Let me get your, let me get your attention.
Excuse me, can everyone exit out of the order plate floor?
Yeah.
Kinda quietly.
I'm long far to get to meet you. I'll be soon.
this time.
Mr. President, with items two, three, and four, hold on, it's too loud.
Items two, three, and four, on the Economic Development Committee, we will cancel those items for today and move to the next committee meeting.
Table them and discuss them next time.
For the next council.
Delay, we'll delay.
Yeah, delay them to the next council meeting.
Two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four. And move directly to the Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I call the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Goins, Mr. Silver. I am number one to hear a report from the administration concerning the expenses and income for those in Fulton Hotel. Okay. At this time, let the President speak. Mr. President, proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Lavadain. At the last council meeting, we discussed some concern about the Alexander Fulton Hotel. One of my concerns that came before this council and the Finance Committee was expenditures as it related to, number one, the capital maintenance fund, the money that we use for after Rural Water, and the work that was done in the Alexander Fulton Hotel. And I became concerned after hearing those complaints that we received based on their time and tenure here at the hotel. During the last council meeting, we passed an additional ordinance for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. At this respective meeting, the council requested a randomized report of those expenditures. I would like to thank the administration for the report that they sent to this council in discussion of the initiatives and some of the past ordinances that was given that the council passed. But one of the things that I would like to clarify for this council and what we asked for, Councilman Jonathan Goins, as the district councilman for that district, and in my request to you and what we stated was that I would like to see the amount of money that has been spent and what was spent over the last fiscal year and on the months leading into the Rural Water Convention. Because I became concerned about the maintenance, what I heard about the concerns with elevators, and our continued effort to maintain that hotel and to keep it open. I took it upon myself to check without a tour, which hasn't been as of done yet. I've made that request to the city attorney. We've received several reports from the management administration, but again, it was not what I expected. I contacted the state of Louisiana, the health department, and for one portion of that hotel, received some alarming information regarding the Alexander Fulton. The cafeteria and its maintenance, some general areas of concern was only a few which I would name. General maintenance, the floors, which had been cleaned. Plumbing is not maintained. Lighting and testing walk-in refrigerator units, drive-through storage area or other rooms is not maintained. A current state food safety certificate is not posted. And I would be glad to provide this for all my fellow councilmen. I would not go into detail of this report. But I would like to say this to my fellow councilmen and to the administration. What I would like to say, on behalf of all of you, which are my fellow councilmen and from the administration, and Mr. Chuck Johnson, again, I would like to place this item back on the agenda at the next council meeting, is a detailed report, line item report based on what we spent on expenditures, what we spent for the elevators, just a dollar amount. But one of the things going into Rural Water that we requested was to see and take a look at the dollar amount based on what we passed an ordinance, on the amount of money that we spent on the hotel and what we continue to spend. I know we have some crucial decisions to make in the near future as we look at whether we would like to keep that hotel open. But in the meantime, the eighty thousand from capital maintenance, a hundred and forty thousand that we just approved a few weeks ago, and so with two hundred thousand dollars, I would think if we're spending that type of money, and I don't know because I hadn't received the report, you know, I would like to see where the taxpayers' dollars are going. Because as representatives of all of us, you know, it's important to me that that is done. Accountability, you know, from the administration to this council. Mrs. Silver has worked with the current group and the past group on things that need to be done so far as to future that hotel as a liaison between the council and administration. And this report that came down from the Department of Health was as of July first. Rural Water took place two to three weeks later. So my concern is, if we spent money on capital maintenance, why the work wasn't done prior to the convention? Or what wasn't done? Why would I receive this from the Louisiana Department of Health? And now it's work, I would like you to make a copy as a pass to all council. Why would we have this type of report? You know, that really concerns me. We want the best for the community, we want the best for the city, and seeing that that hotel stays open. But we have some tough decisions to make over the next few weeks based on that hotel. I'm sure Mr. Chuck Johnson will tell us that at city attorney. But those are my concerns to you as my fellow councilman. To see where we are, the amount of money we have spent, you know, of course, we've been supporting this hotel over the last, you know, couple of years to make sure it stays open. But again, we have to make a tough decision based on this hotel, based on its future, based on how it's maintained, and based on what we would do with it. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Gibson.
I'd just like to add to make sure that the public understands, we are asking for an expenditure report for money that the council approved to be used on the hotel. The administration has a staff of people. I really don't understand why this is so difficult to get a document, an expense report. We gave you this dollar amount, you spent it on this list of things. That's what we have been asking for, just in case anybody out there in the public needed some clarification on that. That's what we've asked for. We've got this big binder right here as of late, the expenses are not in here.
Could I address that, Mr. President?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
The administration is going to provide the council with detailed figures on the expenditures. We're tracking the individual line items which you asked for, which is a very time-consuming and tedious process. I will say, I've seen the preliminary numbers. We want to make sure that the numbers are absolutely accurate before we make those public. We don't want to make any mistakes. Ordinance number nine-nine-dash-two thousand and nine authorized one point one-six-seven million dollars, and the numbers that I've seen were well below that. That's excluding the settlement with Capital One. We will provide those numbers to the council, Mr. Johnson, once we have the reporting final form.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We understood the task that you asked. We want to make sure that the product we provide is accurate.
All right, thank you. What we received, I want to tell the public, we received the Global Hospitality Insights. It's several pages from a booklet from hospitality hotels from Ernest and Young. It talks about the hotel industry, how does it make money, the slow economic. We didn't ask for this. We could have saved this paper. We also received this booklet. It has some of the ordinances, and some of these items are also in this. I appreciate the mayor binding it, but we didn't ask for it. All this talks about the hotel industry, the slump and so forth. This is a smaller market. We're not in New York, we're not Orlando. It's difficult to get a hotel of any stature in this area, especially downtown when you have nothing downtown to bring anybody. downtown to, to bring anybody down. But these are documents that, uh, the mayor could have, to be honest, he could have kept because this is not what we asked. We want the expenditures. If we spent money on beds, we want to see receipts for beds. If we spent money on sheets, show us receipts. If we spent money on food, show us receipts. Show us what we spent the money on because we have to be accountable. We just can't just keep putting money over there, and that's our major concern. Any other questions from this, uh, body?
Uh, could I address that, Mr. Johnson?
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Lavigne, the reason the mayor provided you with that information is because you have some serious policy issues to decide. There are other cities that are facing, uh, similar economic conditions, similar downtown issues, uh, as the ones we're facing, so you can make an informed decision. The, uh, mayor thought that the best approach would be to provide the council with the most information, uh, available, the same kind of information that we look at when we make policy decisions that we recommend to you, sir. So, uh, those documents that you feel are unnecessary, we felt they'd be good for your, uh, edification or your, your, uh, process, whatever process you use to educate yourself about the issues that the city is facing. It's, it's your choice to read it or not.
All right, I know, I've, I've read them, I'm familiar with it. Chair recognizes Ms. Gibson and Mr. President, and then I'm gonna ask, uh, several, two people asked to be, to, uh, speak on this topic.
Uh, another point of clarification. The agenda item is, is to hear a report from the administration concerning the expenses and income for the Alexander Fulton Hotel. Appreciate the document, understand that it is for our education on this issue so that in the future we can make better decisions, but this document should not have been given to us as the report for the question that we ask. That, that is, that's the point. I mean, we understand what it is here for, Mr. Johnson, and actually appreciate it because we do want to make informed decisions when it's time for us to make those decisions, but this report was submitted as the report for the question asked.
The, the report will be supplemented with the figures, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The expenditures are public, and I, I wouldn't be standing here telling you that, uh, we're well below the one point one six seven that you authorized in two thousand and nine, if I didn't know that.
Okay, and Mr. Johnson, as soon as y'all have that report, uh, ready, uh, could you inform the clerk, of course? I say, as soon as you have that report prepared, can you inform the clerk?
Oh, well, yes, we'll provide it to the council as soon as we, we have it in proper form.
Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes Ms. Underwood and then Mr. Jules Green.
Mr. Jules wants to go by.
Okay, I will yield. Mr. Jules, please step forward.
Three minutes for Mr. Green.
Good afternoon, council again. Uh, in recognition of the report that Mr. Johnson gave, now, I didn't get his report, but from Greg Ammon's blog, safee Louisiana dot com, there are sixteen violations at the Fulton. Mayor Roy, a couple of weeks ago, after the Rural Water people left, he made a comment about that they needed, people wanted them to provide soap at the hotel. The soap was needed for the employees who use the bathroom, who cook the food. It's in the report. You can read it, go online, and get it. Now, the report came after a complaint was filed in June. The report was filed July one. After that report came out, Noble took over. Rural Water came a couple of days later. My question is, who is at fault for the Fulton's deplorable state? Is it H I P? Or is it the City of Alexandria, or is it both? Because Noble inherited what they received. So if you're going to stand up as the mayor and say they needed soap, make sure you tell them who needed the soap, why they needed the soap, and what section they needed the soap. Because surely, who wants to eat at a restaurant when the employees come out with no accessible items to wash their hands and serve you one of their specialty burgers? I thank you for your time. We need an answer.
Thank, thank you, uh, Ms. Gail Underwood, you want to speak real quick?
I think Mr. Johnson wants to make a comment.
He wants to.
Yes, I'd just.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd just like to respond to that. Um, one of the thing, the things that the public needs to understand and that some members of this body need also to understand, the city is not the operator of the hotel. Since two thousand and six, the operators of the hotel have been Raj Patel's in our group, Fred Rosenfeld's company, Noble and H I P. Whatever report Mr. Johnson is referring to from the health department, those violations would be attributable to the operator, not to the city. There are none of our employees who work in the kitchen at the hotel.
Please turn, hold on. Please turn your phone off.
I'm, I'm having a really hard time understanding how y'all feel bad-mouthing a public asset and in, in a, in essence, depreciating its value publicly is gonna help us when it's time to sell the hotel. It, it just doesn't make any sense. We got that hotel by operation of law, Ms. Gibson. We didn't spend one penny constructing that tower. We got it because we beat Capital One in court. They thought they had a mortgage on the entire thing. They were wrong. When Raj Patel defaulted on the lease and Capital One refused to cure the defaults and name a new operator, their leasehold mortgage was terminated, which gave ownership of the entire property to the city. We didn't ask for it. We got it because the other parties to the contract didn't fulfill their obligations. Do we want to be in the hotel business? Absolutely not. But does it make any sense whatsoever to depreciate the value of a public asset, something that we want to unload, want to sell, want to get rid of ourselves? To me, it doesn't. It makes no sense.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Ms. Underwood and Ms. Gibson, you can speak while she's talking, while she's walking up.
Oh, okay, um, my comment, um, Attorney Johnson, is that we do own the hotel, so it is ultimately our responsibility. We may not be over there doing the day-to-day operations, but as long as we are pumping in taxpayers' dollars into that hotel, then we are responsible. And if, and if the operation is not being, um, handled properly by the folks that are operating it, then that needs to be addressed by the owners of whom we are.
And let me say something.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What disappoints us is that, uh, H I P was operating the hotel. They leave right before Rural Water, and then we get all these complaints. There was no monitoring, no supervision, no nothing, just run the hotel. If we own an asset, we have to monitor, make sure it's being taken care of. That's our biggest problem. If you had issues at the, at the Fulton, at least contact the council and say, hey, we have some problems. We don't hear anything, and then we ask questions, everybody's so secretive and deceptive and misleading, we don't know what's going with the hotel. But then we hear these complaints during a convention, and we constantly putting money in it, then that gets our ear because we didn't want taxpayers' money. We don't have a big money tree in the back, we can just pull thousands and millions of dollars. This, this is the people's money, we have to be accountable for the people's money. And they expect us to make good decisions, so I hate the idea that we spend all our time on H I P, and it looks like H I P did a super job of running to the ground. They should have at least said, hey, we have some problems, mayor, let's go do something, let's correct the problem. Don't just leave it in Rural Water's here. That's unacceptable. If we own something, let's take care of it. But don't let a company run into the ground. Go ahead, Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Gail.
Thank you for giving me extra time and let Mr. Green go by because I have to get calm and count my ten, count to ten. First of all, I understand that eighty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand dollars came out of District One money. I ask that no more be taken from this district. Every other district has projects going, over there has nothing. Um, it's funny to me, I'm not computer smart, I can turn on, get email, and send email and look things up, but I have a C P A that right now, if I call him, can put the last four digits of mine and my husband's social security number and instantly pull up twenty or thirty years of tax reports. And it's funny to me that we cannot get a simple statement, a simple answer to anything. My suggestion is, somebody, if it takes me or somebody, if you want to help me, I'm ready to call in the federal government, I'm ready to call in the attorney general, and have them do an independent audit of this city of Alexandria. The reports are frivolous, they're long-winded, and all we want is simple answers. If it takes going to the attorney general or to the federal government because federal money is involved in our city finances, then let's do it.
Thank you. Ms. Gail, we all like simple answers, but it's hard to get simple answers from the, from the, from this administration. Uh, is there any other questions, comments on the Fulton? There're big none, uh, we got item number two. Item number two.
That's what you gotta do. That's the bond.
That's the bond. Let's talk about the bond proposal, I think, Ms., uh, okay. Let me read that, well, just let me read, item number two, discuss declaring the intention of the city council, civil exam state Louisiana, uh, acting state Louisiana to issue utility revenue bonds for the city in, in one or more series in the amount not to exceed two million dollars. Any questions, comments about this issue? Want to say anything about this?
Yeah, only very simply, they, they set forth all the regulations concerning this, this is a procedural deal that must be voted on tonight, and the bonding people would run through, it's already scheduled from now through December. This is not the first rodeo. I think you sent out all the information, did you not, Madam Clerk, showing the procedure? So I think all we have to do with that, this is just a procedural matter.
Ms. Chair recognizes Ms. Gibson.
Um, I, I ask for this to be put back, uh, in committee so that we can discuss, um, publicly some education that I learned on this procedure and, and the administration's, uh, procedure. If folks remember at the last meeting before we did this, um, I did submit a motion to ask for the bond council to be changed. Of course, the administration ran in and said because of the charter, we could not do that, um, so of course, I did not get the support of a second. Want the public to understand, the only reason I ask for it to be changed, from my understanding, according to the city attorney, possibly about fifteen years or so now, um, this one particular, uh, bond attorney has been used for every single deal in the city of Alexandria, every single bonding deal. I am looking for some diversity, I am looking for us to spread some projects and some things around to other qualified people. There is a red book, uh, for the public to know of those who are qualified to do bond work throughout the state. Um, it's rather small, it's a specialized, uh, you know, area of law, but there are other ones that are qualified to do it, except for the one that we've been using for fifteen years. Per the charter, according to the administration, uh, running in at that time telling us we couldn't do it, we couldn't violate the charter. Um, I then wanted to, of course, understand better, uh, how the procedure does take place and all of this. So I had a, a conversation outside with our city attorney who, uh, educated me on the process of choosing bond attorneys and all of that. What I was told by our city attorney, and thank goodness, uh, President Johnson walked in on that conversation as well, I was told that with this being a D H H, Department of Hu- Health and Hospitals bond, that D H H has their own bond council, and that D H H chooses the bond council that works for the municipality. Then went on to question, well, that's interesting that D H H chose the same bond council that we've been using for fifteen years. It was explained to me, oh, they're great, they do such awesome work, they just so happened to be chose again. Went on, in addition to ask then about the co-bond councils, which happened to be some local people. So then I asked, well, how did the co-bond councils get chosen? Again, I was told that it was through the D H H, they choo- their council chooses even the co-bond council. In that same conversation, Attorney Johnson did correct himself, um, that that statement was not true.
Get it right.
And that he chose the bond council, the co-bond councils. And of course, it happens to be some African Americans, and they were, he was trying to be in.
Female.
Female, female African Americans.
Diverse.
Very diverse, that he was trying to be in compliance with our AFEET program. Took all of that, um, unfortunately, uh, as, as a council person, I am new to this, I ask a whole lot of questions. Sometimes folks that think that they're out of the box are inappropriate, but I ask a lot of questions because I want to learn. Unfortunately, in this situation, I then had to go outside of our administration and the advice of our own city attorney, and I actually contacted D H H's attorney, who was a Mr. David Wolf, and I asked him to explain to me how the process takes place. I have an email from him even after our conversation because of course I wanted to have this information in writing. I then found out that D H H does not choose a municipality's council. The municipality chooses their own council. In fact, when it comes to D H H bond issues.
I never said that D H H chose Grant Sluter.
Mr. Johnson, let her, let her.
I said that D H H chose Adams and Reese.
Hold on. No, you hold on.
Stop, stop, stop. She's misrepresenting what I said.
Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna let you speak, let her go. You're gonna go next. Res- respect our meeting. I'm not gonna let you pounce on me just like the mayor. Let her talk and you'll respond. I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson, go ahead.
Like I said, I had a telephone conversation with Mr. Wolf, but then I also asked him if he could put the procedure in writing, so anybody that wants a copy, I do have this email in writing where he explains the process. Actually, with D E Q and D H H's revolving loan funds, there is no negotiating as with other bond terms and bond issues. You can, you have, you need that specialized council because sometimes there is some negotiating with the terms of the bond. When it comes to D H H and D E Q bonds, there is no negotiating. Whatever their terms are, whatever their interest rate is, that is what it is. He went on to explain, and again, I have this in writing, that with D H H and D E Q funds like this, actually, he can, his, his group, Adams and Reese, can actually do all of the work for the city of Alexandria, because pretty frankly, we're gonna pay him. If we chose our own council, we would pay that person as well. But he said, and in this letter he states, he could do all of the work for the city of Alexandria, and then our staff attorneys can review it. There is no negotiating, a staff attorney can review those, all of that documentation, and the deal can be done. In short, the city of Alexandria could have saved about twenty-five thousand dollars. By just using D H H's attorney to do all of the work, and then our three staff attorneys that we have, but I'm sure particularly our city attorney, because he is the one with the most expertise, could then just review those documents and the deal would be done. So I wanted the public to know that because I personally have a problem with that. We talk about legal fees all the time, and that is an area where some legal fees could have been saved. On traditional bond issues, everyone, I want you to know that, yes, it is necessary for us to have our own bond council to make sure that we get the best deal possible, but when it comes to D H H and D E Q's revolving loan funds, of which we are pursuing, it is not necessary for us to hire our own council.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Glad somebody's calling some saving the taxpayers' money because our legal fees is getting out of control, and we have to be prudent with the money.
Legal fees are not out of control. I wish you would stop saying that, that's just a ridiculous statement.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead and respond here. Go ahead and respond.
Well, let me respond to your ridiculous statement. The legal fees are not out of control. I am a steward of the public fist, sir, and I've never spent one dollar that I thought was inappropriately spent. So I resent those silly kinds of comments, and you have no documentation to back it up. It's nothing but demagoguery, sir, and I know y'all are sick of it, and I'm sick of it too. And I don't care if you like that statement or not. Now, let me respond to you.
I have documentation.
Let me respond to you.
It's our point order.
The two lawyers.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Johnson.
Sure.
Let's, let's discuss subject matter, keep it at that point, let's do it on the time of matter so we can move on.
The two lawyers who were selected as co-counsel in this case were selected by myself and my staff. We did an interview process so that we could build capacity in an area of the legal community which has been traditionally excluded from bond council work. Black lawyers, and for the most part, women, historically have not had the opportunity, Ms. Gibson, to do that type of work.
I am aware.
The two lawyers we selected are competent, they are African-American females.
Women, yes, they are.
And when they finish this work, and maybe one or two other issues, they'll be able to get into the red book and do this type of work. I have never been co-counsel on a bond issue, ma'am, and I don't pretend to be qualified in that issue, in that area. That's why we have Grant Sluter. The, the, the role of the city attorney is to protect the interests of the city, ma'am. And if I felt like we had a legal issue where I needed... I felt like we had a legal issue where I needed someone with more expertise than myself, I think the taxpayers would appreciate me bringing that person on to make sure that there are no mistakes made, because in these bond issues, if you make a mistake, if you commit malpractice, you're talking about millions of dollars that would have to be repaid. Personally, I'm not giving you any of my millions, okay? The, um, if the whole goal of this process is to decide who the lawyers are, I can tell you, that's not gonna happen.
It is not. It is not, just as I started my statement.
The council will never tell me what lawyer will participate on any specific task. There's been two years of litigation in the courts to decide that issue. The name of the case is Jacques Roy versus Myron Lawson and others, and I can tell you, if we get back into the realm of these charter violations, what you're gonna do is get yourself sued, you're gonna be personally liable for the debt, and the city will not provide you defense. So, um, we need our own representation in this case. I want Grant Sluter on the case. I don't think we're wasting money. There's no one, including myself, on my staff, who I feel has the level of expertise to review the documents from our perspective. That's why we have representation. I don't think it's a waste of money at all, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
I disagree with that. Um, and no, just like I said when I started this, it is not about changing the legal council, but it is about making the citizens aware, first of all, that me trying to get educated and learn how all of this works, I was not told the truth. And then I had to go back and research on my own to find out what the truth is. You know, that makes, that makes a working relationship really difficult, because we are here and we should be able to trust each other and share information for us to move projects, move things forward. So this is not about changing the council, yes, that, the bond council, yes, that was my initial desire, and again, it was to spread the work around.
Have you ever met Scott Crawford?
I have spoken with Mr. Crawford.
Have you ever seen him in person?
I have spoken with Mr. Crawford.
Have you ever seen him? Do you know anything about his work?
Yes, I do.
The quality of his work?
I do know about his work.
Let's finish one at a time. Let's wrap this up.
What's the name of his firm?
I just wanted, I just wanted the public to know what the real story was, and that we could have saved some money on this.
Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna wrap this part of the issue up. Okay, let's go to, that's it on that issue. We have, um...
Are we gonna recommend to the full council, uh, number two?
It was just for discussion.
It was for discussion.
It's already on there.
It's already done.
Okay, it's already discussion. That'll wrap up Finance Committee at this time.
I wanna make, may I, on others, may I make a comment?
Real quick.
For the next meeting, I'd like to do, since we're all talking about saving the taxpayers' money, we have to be careful how we spend the money, because I've heard this thing time and time and time again. I use an expression, you reprimanded me last time, I'll use it again. We screwed up on something, in the next meeting, I'll tell you what the screw-up is, number one. Number two, I'd also like to have an accounting through the office, what we're doing, I'm talking about we as a council, to show that we too are being exemplary citizens and trying to curtail our expenses. I'd like to know what our budget is and what we have done to date.
May I comment on that one right quick? According to the budget that we just passed, we cut, our expenses were cut by $40,000.
I didn't ask that question.
But I, I wanna make sure that everyone understands.
Yeah, we cut our budget because administration didn't. Administration didn't.
I asked the question predicated on this current budget, what have our expenses been to date? That's all.
Okay. Do you want the administration's budget too? We'll get both. We'll get both.
Administration, you're gonna get anyway.
Yeah, but if you wanna question ours, we've cut out, we always cut out budget. You have no problem with that?
I hope that this comes from, certainly, this is not a point of retaliation because of what we want based on what the needs of this community to the city are. Our goal is to make sure that you know within the City Council, we're taking care of business. I will say that as council president, so we will move forward with the agenda, we'll move forward past public works. We would delay public works, I'll recommend that we delay public works. Defer us to the next meeting, items of that area. We do have the report. Mr. Howard requested some information, we do have that, we provide it to you, and you can read it and come back at the next council meeting, based on your concerns, based on your concerns along those areas of district threat. With that said, we will move directly to full council meeting at this time. I would like for the invocation to be given by Councilman Jim Valuard, with the place to be given by Councilman Chuck Fowler.
Dear Lord, look over this council meeting, and please bring rain to this area, which is badly needed. I heard thunder outside, so maybe, I answered, might be, uh, I pray it might be answered already, but for this town and for this country. Let's pray to the Lord.
Amen.
May I ask that you remain standing for a brief moment before we have a litigant and acknowledge the respect of the good departed woman, Attorney of the City, an exemplary citizen, wonderful father, Mr. Howard Guest.
Please, ladies and gentlemen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Lawverdane?
Present.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Present.
Mr. Valuard?
Here.
Mr. Goings?
Present.
Mr. Silver?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Consent counted.
Uh, five finance, eight finance, ten finance.
Move by Councilman Silver, second by Councilman Fowler. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, it passes. Madam Clerk, item else?
Ordinance is for final adoption, subject to a public hearing, number fourteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for the purchase of six police motorcycles with trade-ins for the Alexandria Police Department.
Move.
Move by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Fowler. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, the motion passed.
Number fifteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending capital budget to recognize $150,000 of CDBG disaster recovery funds for the GIS mapping of the city storm drainage system.
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, the motion passed.
Number sixteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acquisition of parcel number seven-three-seven required for the Sugar House Road drainage project.
Move by Councilman Fowler.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, the motion passed.
Number seventeen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acquisition of parcel number seven-seven-seven required for the Horseshoe and Masonic Drive Turn Lane Project.
Move by Councilman Fowler.
Second.
Second by Councilman Valuard. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, the motion passed.
Number eighteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract between the city and Progressive Construction Company for safe routes to school Grant LS Rug Elementary School. Move.
Move by Councilwoman Gibson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Valuard. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition, the motion passed.
Number nineteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into necessary contracts, including a contract and development agreement with Third Street Partners and New Horizons Development, providing for a sale of six acres, more or less, of property from the city and otherwise concerning a portion of property, formerly being part of the Hodges Stockyard Track located on Third Street, to set out and provide relative to terms and conditions in a cooperative endeavor and development agreement between the parties to authorize a contract to sell and a contract of sale of property for consideration from the city to the third parties for development and construction activities on the project site, including new construction of commercial improvements and other facilities, and relative to third parties constructing an additional improvement in River Place Phase Two, providing for 64 additional rental units on a portion of the property, to authorize certain funding from Spark or the capital budget for assisting development and infrastructure costs, to authorize a lease of a substation located on the subject property, authorizing incentives and public works related to the proposed cooperative endeavor, and to authorize security instruments and authority for the mayor or his designate to subordinate security instruments if necessary pertaining thereto, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
This item came by committee and opposition. Can we have a motion second, that reference from a representative of that committee, which is Councilman Jonathan Goings, district, and I also would like to have a roll call vote on this matter.
I'm moving for discussion.
Uh, let me ask this, uh, the gentleman that's in, oh, I'm sorry, do you, you second?
No.
You need to second it.
I need you to discuss.
We, let's have a motion second just for discussion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by who? Who made the motion?
He did.
Motion by Councilman Goings, second by Councilman Fowler for discussion. Discussion, let's have it. Councilman Fowler, there.
Uh, this item had a lot of controversy, both sides, and it's a tremendous amount of money to pass up. The gentleman that is heading up the project said if it does, if he does not complete it in two weeks, it goes away. He can't do it. Uh, I'd ask that we simply just delay it for two weeks. If, for some reason, someone has an epiphany, or if there is a change of heart for the project, if people that are for it come back and speak to it, that's fine. We call a special meeting, we may be able to do it. If nothing happens, it goes away anyway, because the gentleman said if it's not done in two weeks, it's not done. So, I'd ask that we consider that.
Councilman Goings.
Once again, as I stated in committee, I support the project, I love the project, I think it will do well for the lower thorough community and the city of Alexandria. However, the citizens that live there that I represent, I'm their voice, I'm their voice up here, I make decisions for them. I speak for the elderly women that can't come to council meetings and speak themselves, and it's apparent that the citizens that live in that area are opposed to it. So, that's why I'm opposed to it.
Okay, yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to direct a question. With that, having said that, though, you're asking about, you know, have further discussion, wouldn't that be counterproposal, counterproductive, since for all practical purposes, you indicated that perhaps those persons who are for it would not come here, or you want a chance, taking a chance, two weeks, and not asking more people to come to see if there's any change in voice? Or you just wanna vote on?
I think...
First, I didn't ask any questions. Uh, the meeting was at 3:30, uh, it was published, citizens stand by.
They should, they should have been here. Okay.
If I presented myself, it would be different.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a question with a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
We...
The motion.
You have a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion in a second.
More motion discussed.
We just have a motion to discuss.
I'm, I'm moved that we make a motion to, in opposition of it.
Uh, still a second?
In opposition of it. Do we understand?
Am I right?
Do we need to do that?
Yes or no? Madam Clerk, roll call.
A yes vote would be in favor of passage.
And no vote would be in opposition.
So, is that a motion by Mr. Lawverdane, and did you second it?
No, I didn't second it.
A motion to discuss, but we don't need a vote.
Right.
And Mr. Fowler's second.
We're already discussing, we need to go ahead and take the vote. Am I right?
Yeah, now the motion is to consider adoption.
Yeah.
Which means if you're in favor of the motion to adopt it, you gotta vote yes.
Against it, you vote no. Can we get a motion second? Let's move it.
Moved already.
Move by Councilman Goings, second by Councilman Lautner. Roll call vote.
Mr. Goings?
No.
Mr. Silver?
Stain.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Lawverdane?
No.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Valuard?
No.
And suppose you have one yes, five noes, and one abstaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So it fails.
Move to the next item on the agenda. Committees?
I'd like to also recommend...
Just one second. Point of order, please.
Before we adjourn, I would like to recommend that we send a letter to the family of Howard Guest, for all the years that he's served, to the community and the outstanding work he performed.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, she, she has that information. Okay, let's go directly to committees, and we'll wrap up.
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawverdane?
No report, but I wanna say something illegal with Mr. Goings.
Public Works, Mr. Silver?
None.
Legal Committee, Mr. Goings?
No.
Okay, can I say something real quick? To the public, you all have been hearing about the Cleco case, the attorney's case, that's the case involving Ms. Bridget Brown, Mr. Sharp, Mr. Davidson, that case will resume. There's a green sheet of paper, you can pick up the dates, we're asking the public to come by. You wanna get some information on the Cleco case, this is the trial to go to. The trial date for August is this August the 26th, which is Friday at 9:00 a.m. They have a court date Monday, August 29th at 9:00 a.m., Tuesday, August 30th at 9:00 a.m., Wednesday, August 31st, 9:00 a.m. We're in federal court at 5:15 in Murray Street, Alexandria, on the second floor, Judge Drail. You cannot bring your cell phone. October date is October 17th on a Monday at 9:00 a.m. November date is Friday, November 18th, 2011, 9:00 a.m. If you have any time to come to the trial, it would be very informative on the Cleco case, a lot of information will be distributed. It's important that you see where your money's going, and there's a lot of issues regarding the Cleco and why your bills are the way they are. If you'd like to, there's a green notice, you can take that out, pass to your neighbors, neighborhood groups. It's important that we participate and we listen and learn, because there's some items that, some things that were going on that the council did not know about. But if you go to trial, I think you'll have some previous, some information to that, so please go. Thank you, Mr. Goings.
Utility Committee, Mr. Fowler? No report. Community Development, Ms. Gibson?
No report.
Personnel, Mr. Valuard?
No report.
Public Safety, Ms. Gibson?
No report.
Any review, Mr. Goings?
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawverdane?
No report.
Governmental Affairs, Mr. Goings?
No report.
Uh, one thing I would like to add on the government affairs, Councilman Goings, maybe at the next meeting, you could bring us up to, up to date on what we're all with the reportment assessment. We could add that, Madam Clerk, because it's something that we do have to do over the next few months as we lead into the next year.
Yes, sir.
And I also would like to recognize, uh, Power City Councilman Kevin Doorn, thank you for being here. Nothing else coming for the Alexandria City Council, this meeting is adjourned. Uh, one thing I would like to add on the Government Affairs, Councilman Goings, maybe at the next meeting, you could bring us up to, uh, up to date on where we're at with the reapportionment assessment. Uh, we could add that, Madam Clerk, because it's something that we do have to do over the next few months as we lead the city.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I also would like to recognize, uh, Power City Councilman Kevin Doan, thank you for being here. Nothing else coming forward, the Alexandria City Council, this meeting is adjourned.